Good evening. I'll call this meeting to order. It is the Monday, May 22, 2017 Committee of the Whole. I am Alderman Tereberkhardt of the First Ward where I serve with Alderman Mike Bruno. We have eight Aldermen here tonight. Alderman Kilberg and Alderman Cummings are absent. Our first order of business is to approve the Committee of the Whole minutes from May 8, 2017. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion and Alderman Marx makes a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Our first item of business is to recommend the approval of the draft ordinance adopting prevailing wages. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Swanson makes a second. Do we have any discussion or comments, questions from the dais? Any questions from the audience? If not, I guess we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 3B, recommend approval of the special events liquor licenses for Quiante's Restaurant and at the American Legion Post for Swedish days, June 20 through 25, 2017. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Bruno, followed by Alderman Marx with the second. Are there any questions or comments from the dais? Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jean, is there anything special or new with any of these liquor licenses or beer tents?
Nothing I'm aware of, no.
Let the record show, she said no. You don't have to get up. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, if we're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. 3C, recommend draft resolution authorizing declaration of surplus property for three police vehicles to be sold with proceeds returned to the city's capital equipment fund. And Sergeant Rivera is here tonight to answer any questions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Swanson. Are there any questions tonight or comments from the dais? No? Sergeant Rivera, anything to add?
Nothing to add.
All right, ready to vote then. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. 3D, recommend draft ordinance changing the names of certain streets within the corporate boundaries of Geneva. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Bruno, followed by Alderman Marx with the second. Are there any questions from the dais? Yes, Alderman Bruno.
Just, thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie, this is just for the benefit of the public. No one's street address is changing. This is just to make our records jive with the county. We are officially-
Or really, the county's records jive with us.
Well, yeah, that's-
But that's correct. Nobody's actual address is changing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? All right, we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. 3E, recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of 2017-2018 Wetlands Management Services Agreement for Eagle Brook and On Brentwood's Pond subdivisions with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick in the amount not to exceed $44,000.
So moved.
Thank you. Alderman Marx? Alderman McGowan? Are there any questions from the dais or any comments? Alderman Rodecky?
Just can you give us an update on the On Brentwood Pond? Because I know that one, we were kind of playing a little catch-up with it. That one got out of hand for a while and then we had the SSA to come in and start to rehab that area.
Due to the extremely limited budget that was set by the homeowners association, it's going to be several years before any significant progress is made in that area. We have made efforts to, as a matter of fact, we have an upcoming Eagle Scout service project that's going to be doing some of the manual clearing tasks through that area. But last year, the focus was on removing of hazardous brush and dead trees as well as getting the outfalls and inlets cleared and functioning again.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. Rich, this, just again, for the benefit of the public, the monies we're talking about here are coming from the SSA. This is not generally funded by-
Correct. The On Brentwood's Pond SSA is providing for the full funding of $3,000 and the $41,000 is coming out of SSA 11, which is the Eagle Brook subdivision SSA, special service area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the dais? All right, in that case, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Moving on to 3F, recommend draft resolution authorizing third-year option to Clark Environmental Mosquito Management, Inc., contract for mosquito abatement in 2017 in an amount not to exceed $47,348. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks. Alderman Bruno?
Second.
Alderman Marx with the second. Are there any questions or comments from the dais? Yes, Alderman McGowan?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I didn't ask this of anyone earlier, but I noticed that there was a slight increase in cost for the mosquito abatement this year over last year. Does anyone know why? Did the company explain to us why there was that increase in cost?
Mr. Babica is here to take the question.
The contract that the city has with Clark Mosquito includes an annual rider increase of about, I think it's like 1.2% or $946 per year that the contract's renewed.
So what do you mean by that? The rider?
The contract that the city has with Clark Mosquito, within the terms of the agreement, it's for an automatic increase or rider. And the fact that if the city decides to exercise the option to renew the contract, there's a built-in cost increase. It's within the contract language and it's either 2.1% or cost-of-living increase as determined in Chicago on a certain date. In this instance, it came out to $946 from last year.
And is this something that you feel, is this a competitive price still? Or do you think this is, has the city looked at other companies and kind of?
When we reviewed this last year, St. Charles, Geneva, and Batavia in collaborative effort go out with a joint purchase, a joint RFP that was issued back in 2010, I believe. I can get you the exact date when that was issued. But since then, even though it was a joint release for the RFP, each community has its own contract due to the varying sizes and needs within a specific community. And the last year, Batavia and Geneva looked at other communities and options and there were no bidders on the Batavia process. So at that point in time, because Batavia had not received any additional bids other than from Clark Mosquito, we brought forth the recommendation to the City Council to renew the contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the dais? All right, not from the public, it looks like. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Rich. The next one, 3G, recommend draft ordinance authorizing and providing for issue of not to exceed $12.5 million in waterworks and sewerage revenue bonds, Series 2017 Junior Lean IEP-A for purposes of paying costs of necessary improvements to waterworks and sewerage system. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion?
Second.
Alderman Bruno with the second. Do we have any comments or questions from the dais? I think Rita Cruz is here to answer any questions we have. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you. And again, we've been talking about this with the EPA mandate, just mostly for public consumption. This is to pay for improvements to reduce phosphorus discharge into the Fox River. These two items, let's see, G and H are linked. I guess I would have a question for Director Babica. Do you have any sense as to when we, have we started any of this?
The bid specifications and plans are going through their final review and QA QC check with CDM Smith. We're projecting to issue these probably out for bid in late June or early July.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Rodecky?
Well, since we're clarifying things for the audience, let's be sure that everybody knows that this is an unfunded mandate by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. It's something that they deemed and passed on to the local governments that now pass this on to the ratepayers. So when their water bills go up, they'll know the reason why. It's because of an unfunded mandate that is passed down again from the state of Illinois to the local municipalities. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. So, in this case, we sort of have no choice but to vote to approve the issue of these bonds to pay for the necessary upgrades to our wastewater treatment facility as mandated by the Illinois EPA. So, just hypothetically speaking, what if the mandate changes? I know maybe that's a silly question, but I'm just kind of wondering if we go ahead and approve the borrowing of this money. And it is at a low interest rate, but all the same, what if, you know, the leadership changes and the mandate changes? Is that a possibility? And what would we do in that case? That's my question.
This question was brought up earlier in the year, I believe, back in, it might even have been around December or January this year. The reply back from the Illinois EPA when this was first brought up was that they do not foresee any changes at the federal level regarding the Clean Water Act. In addition, the fact that many of these changes that are due to phosphorus removal that is the unfunded mandate will bring about efficiencies within the plant. We're replacing in some instances pumps and aerators from the 1960s and 1970s. So the new equipment will actually increase efficiency, energy consumption within the facility itself. These will not add capacity to the plant. The plant is pretty much going to be pegged out at where its maximum is. But it will allow for that plant to process the materials more efficiently and more effectively and cleaner for the environment. So once we go down this road, once we're under construction, this project is, we're not building a new facility. We're retrofitting an existing facility that has to remain operational. So once we go down this path, we're going down this path. We won't be able to, without substantial cost, stop the work and keep the plant running. That's why it's an 18-month process. We have to work around the plant. We have to do these improvements at the same time as keeping the plant fully operational and functional. So abandoning this process midway through, while I guess anything is possible engineering-wise, would probably be detrimental to the overall capacity of the plant itself.
And I have another question. If there is a large amount of phosphorus in the water, the wastewater that's being processed, does that cost more, does it cost any more to process an amount of water with a large quantity or concentration of phosphorus than to process that same amount of water with a, just a light amount of phosphorus? If you understand that?
Absolutely. There are different, each wastewater treatment plant facility is a completely unique living organism and each load that each treatment plant processes is completely different. There are some facilities with more of an industrial facilities that have like a meat rendering facility or canning plant where they're going to have a higher organic load. So their phosphorus loads are going to be completely different. Or if you have a significantly intense industrial process such as like a very large chroming plating facility or a nickel plating facility, their phosphorus load is going to be completely different than the city of Geneva's. So each facility is designed and each capacity and treatment needs within that treatment train are completely independent and unique to that facility. So our facility is designed to handle the, not only the current phosphorus loads, but also the projected phosphorus loads for when the city is built out with a comprehensive plan with the projections of the industrial and the residential and the commercial basis. So the simple answer, I guess, is yes, each plan is completely different and I kind of went on a tangent and I apologize for that.
So would it be a savings for, this is just, I guess, for my own curiosity, but would it be a savings for the city of Geneva if we sort of encouraged people to reduce their use of phosphorus? Like lawn fertilizers and things? Or would that just not have any bearing on the cost of this?
Ideally, the use of lawn fertilizers and pesticides has absolutely no bearing on the wastewater treatment plant because that should not be entering the wastewater stream. So the phosphorus load that the city of Geneva is taking is primarily produced through residential and commercial consumption, which is actually phosphorus being passed through the residents and the customers of the city of Geneva, as well as some phosphorus production through the commercial and industrial settings. So to discourage industrial users is probably well above my pay grade, to make that assumption. But the, there's very little we'd be able to do to regulate the actual human consumption and pass through the phosphorus. Think about the daily vitamins you may take-
Okay.
-as phosphorus loads within there. So that's, the primary source of our phosphorus generation is the actual human consumption and pass-through of the phosphorus.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We have one from the public. If you could stay here, name and address for the record.
Con Somalian, 921 South Batavia Ave. I have two questions. One for this top, this line item, and one for the other. But since I don't want to get up twice, I'm going to ask them both now. One is, does the city have an option to borrow any funds from the enterprise funds for this loan? And two, if there's not a, if there's a prepayment penalty in the contract, I would recommend seeing if that can be removed to leave all payment options open for the future.
Trying to remember the questions. Number one was-
Can we borrow from our enterprise funds?
We borrow from enterprise funds. We could. We did discuss that a few years ago. That was not what City Council had wanted to do. 12 and a half million, no other fund does have that type of money to borrow. Therefore, we are using the Illinois EPA process, which is only 1.75%, which is much greater than going out to debt for an alternate GO bond between 3.5 and 4%. And the other-
Is there a prepayment penalty for these bonds?
On the bonds or on the contract?
The IEP loan?
Page 92 of your PDF, I, does state that the loan agreement shall be subject to prepayment at any time in hold or in part at the option of the loan recipient by payment of the outstanding principal plus accrued interest and any unrepaid interest that the principal incurred the day of the prepayment. So yes.
So there's no penalty?
There's no penalty.
Thank you, Ms. Cruz. Are there any other questions or comments from the audience or from the dais? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. On to 3H, recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of Illinois Environmental Protection Agency IEP-A loan agreement in an amount not to exceed $12.5 million. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx, in a second. Alderman Ruby? Do we have any questions or comments from the dais? Alderman Marx?
Rita, probably this one's in, at the last paragraph in the executive summary where it talks about the uncertainty at the state level. How much of an uncertainty is there?
As of now, there's not as much. I actually was finally able to find a good contact from the state of Illinois. Originally, when I wrote this memo last week, there was really uncertainty if there would be funding for this because of the current state of Illinois. But after talking to them, Rauner has required them to have a paragraph, which is paragraph two inside this document, that says, "If there's no appropriation or no money, you will not get the loan." But they are going to loan out $600 million. They do have money in this revolving fund, which is not part of the general fund, which is subject to appropriation. So there is money available for us to use. He also stated that they do not sign these loan agreements unless they have the funding available and ready to go. So there will be funding for us. We will not be in this situation, once I finally found the right person at the state to talk to.
So we sign the loan agreement now, which would them set aside their 12.5 million, not at the end when they really truly fund it all?
Exactly.
I guess that was my next.
Yes.
Okay. So once we approve this next week and it goes down to Springfield, they will set aside that money then for us?
For us. And whenever we get to that point and we use our drawdown schedule, 12, 18 months, whatnot, they'll have the money for us available to you.
So we'll know before we start construction that we have it.
Yeah.
Okay. So voting on this does not take in that last sentence that says we're going to have to raise the funds through an alternate GO bond. That would be a totally separate process, correct? Is my understanding?
Yes.
And again, the language that was in the contract wasn't in previous loan documents, which is why we questioned it.
Yeah, that's why I think you questioned it.
But it's really for those items that are due to the general appropriation as opposed to a revolving fund.
I just wanted to double, get a little explanation for that because it's a little scary trying to borrow that.
It was very scary to have to write that in there and see that paragraph.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. On to 3I, recommend draft resolution accepting real estate purchase agreement to sell public property, parcel number 12-11-101-002, commonly known as the Chrissy site. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion, in a second.
Second.
Alderman Ruby makes a second. Do we have any comments or questions from the dais?
I guess, this still disagreement, I'm not opposed to selling the property. I'm just not sure that this is the best use or if it's the right time, considering that TIF just went into place and that we still don't know what's going to happen to the Mill Race Inn property. That, I just wonder if we're, you know, just going too fast with this piece of property. I'd just like to know what other people think on that because it's been something that I've been, you know, tossing around in my head for quite some time. So, you know. Maybe other people don't have that problem. I'm not sure.
Alderman Bruno?
For myself, not really antsy to sell it, but I'm not sensing or feeling any instinct that this will, entering into this transaction ahead of seeing Mill Race Inn is really, would really change anything. I don't have a problem.
Could raise the price. I mean, it could raise the value of that property, too.
It could. You know, we've had some pretty lengthy discussions on value and the challenges. You know, I'd be happy to sit on it longer, but I'm ready to sell it, too. Thanks.
Alderman Maladra?
Yeah, to my mind, the proposal that I've heard about is consistent with plans that we've had or ideas that we've talked about for this area since we did the downtown master plan. So to me, the bigger question or the more pertinent question is, which moves us closer to our objective? Selling the property now to a developer we're familiar with his product? Or trying to hold out for, you know, a certain percentage more income on the sale of the property? I say we get a chance to complete a vision that we've had for a while, we go for it. And that's what we're doing here.
Alderman Rodecky?
Well, I'll let the chair correct me if I'm out of bounds here with the question or to take the line of discussion this way. I don't know this is about a few dollars. I don't know that the establishment of the sale price, I think that that certainly, there's, the way that the property, the value was established, I think they did it with the best method available to them. That doesn't necessarily reflect what the market value is, in my opinion, because it's what somebody willing to pay for it and what's it worth to me is really what the market value of that property is. So, you know, I don't know that this is, the discussion is more about, you know, is it X or is it Y for the value of it? Because I don't know that I could make a real good discussion or an argument one way or the other. I guess the discussion that I think needs to be had, and perhaps this is not the time to do it, is, you know, should we delay voting on this and entertain looking for requests for proposal for this property in alternate uses? I don't think this is about a dollar and cents discussion necessarily, but I know that that is what's before us right now. So that's why I would look to the chair for clarification if it's valid or to the person to your left or to the left of him to say if it's appropriate discussion topic right now.
I have a question.
Alderman Maladra, unless someone else wants to speak that hasn't already spoken? Yeah. You're answering Jim, so go ahead.
I don't have an answer, but it's a question. But didn't this proposal come from an RFP? So we're just going to get on a revolving train of RFPs until we get one that somebody likes? Or, I mean, this was the result of an RFP.
No, I don't think it was.
I think it was. Yeah?
Just for clarification, the city put out an RFP to accept proposals to buy the land. The process did not include what was going to be done with the land or anything to that nature. It was solely to sell the property and we had one bidder.
Right. And I guess, I stand corrected. I guess that would be my point, that is now, is it too late to have the discussion about what should happen with that property?
I believe at this point, you need to either vote this up or down before you decide you're going to change the process.
Right. So then I guess it is a german question to have a discussion about that.
No, I don't think it is. I think you've embarked on this process. It's here now for your recommendation or not recommendation. And to do anything otherwise, I think, is kind of disingenuous to the process you already put forward back in December.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Oak Creek Capital, when, assuming this gets approved, when might we see something before plan commission?
We have the developer here tonight. If you'd introduce yourself, please.
John Lozinski, managing partner for Oak Creek Capital Partners and also managing partner for Park Place of Geneva LLC. We have the two adjoining properties to the north under contract and we've had those under contract for some time. Those are needed to provide any access to the city's peace. The intent to go to plan- The intent to go to plan commission, obviously, is going to be a little bit dependent on staff and their review. My goal would be to make submissions within the next 30 days of a detailed preliminary plan and plat. Quite frankly, we have needed for months to get out there and do soil borings on the property, because, you know, through investigations, we found out that there's been some dumping on the site. So the real question is, what's been dumped there and does that affect the structural ability of the dirt? We will have those studies started literally within 24 hours of approval at this committee. Site plan's been done for months. Grading plan's been done for months. We've just got to tighten up some engineering issues, do the landscape plan, and then start working on our conceptual, architectural behind, above and beyond what we've done so far. So I would think, you know, what is it, May 22nd, 23rd? I would think probably in August or September, plan commission, by the time we submit, by the time staff reviews, and we respond to any comments, questions, or concerns staff may or may not have.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions? Anyone from the public? Mr. Simonian?
Still Tom Simonian, 921 South Batavia Ave. Under section 2.03, titled Purchase Due Diligence Information under subsection D, I would tie any termination in the city receiving complete copies of all studies if the city decides to exercise that option to any refund due the purchaser. Otherwise, I believe it'll be a difficult task for the city to get those studies if it's terminated and is not tied to the refund. And then under section 2.04, under Governmental Contingency Period, Section A, I'm assuming this includes TIF funds under that section. And then the two properties contemplated to be purchased and added to this development, are they included in the TIF district? And if not, what does that create regarding TIF contributions? And then subsection E, it says, except in the event of a seller default. I think that should read, except in the event of a purchaser default. Thank you.
On your second question, my understanding was the two other properties are not in the TIF district. Is that correct? Any other questions or comments? All right. If we're ready for a vote, we're going to do a roll call for this one.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Jared Burkhardt?
Nay.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Nay.
Gene McGowan?
Nay.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Nay.
It is a tie. Mayor has broken.
We have a tie, four to four.
To clarify, I will be voting aye. And to clarify for the benefit of the committee and those tuning in, that at the June 5th city council meeting, two-thirds of the council will be required to vote in the affirmative to execute this transaction, because it is a sale of public property.
But it does advance, too.
But it does advance the council with this. Exactly.
Onto 3J, recommend draft resolution authorizing transfer of property from the city of Geneva to the Geneva Park District. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Marx with the motion. Do I have a second? Alderman Ruby with the second. Stephanie, could you, again, for the benefit of the public, kind of explain what this property is and what we're talking about tonight?
Sure. This property is generally located at Oak and Bennett. It was deeded to the city back in 1948. Originally, it was deeded to be cemetery land, so the council did pass an ordinance back then that said we would use it exclusively for cemetery purposes. Since that time, we will not be burying people there. It is in the floodplain, so there are some concerns there. Also, in 2015, the Park District did approach the city with interest in acquiring that land for a park. The city is not in the business of parks, so therefore, it does reduce our maintenance and our liability exposure to grant it or transfer it over to the Park District.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the dais? I have a question. We talked about an email where the residents that live near this property alerted about this transfer.
No, there's no change in use. It's still open space. It's still, there's no change. The only change is in the ownership. So if the Park District desires to do anything, they have their own public notice process. But at this point, it's literally just changing ownership. There's no other changes to the property.
Any comments or questions? Alderman McGowan.
Stephanie, or do you know if the city had been doing anything to maintain this property, like annual maintenance?
Mowing.
Just mowing? And that'll just be turned over to the Park District now?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And keeping insurance on it.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Can we do a roll call on this one?
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Jared Burkhardt?
Nay.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Carries seven to one.
I'll just note again that that's also because it's a transfer of public property, requires a two-thirds vote on June 5th.
And onto 3K, recommend approval of draft ordinance rescinding ordinance number 63-17 and paragraph three of ordinance number 64-1. And this is related to the.
Yeah, so this is the restrictions that the city council back in 1963 and 64 put on this property, to use it solely and exclusively for cemetery purposes. So in order for us to transfer it to the park, for them to use as a park, we would need to rescind those restrictions.
Thank you.
Again, restrictions put on by the city council, not restrictions that were on the deed when the property was donated to the city.
Are there any questions or comments from the dais? All right, can we do a roll call? Oh, sorry, I just didn't get a motion on this one. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Alderman Bruno, followed by Alderman Marx with the second. Any questions, comments? No? All right, let's vote. Can we do a roll call?
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Jared Burkhardt?
Nay.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg? I'm sorry, Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Gene McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Carries seven to one. Onto new business. Does anyone have any new business? Yes, Stephanie?
I would just remind everybody that next Monday is a 5th Monday. It is also a holiday, so therefore, you have the week off. Enjoy.
We do have the Memorial Day Parade on Monday for. Anything else, anyone? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alderman Marx?
Second.
Second. Alderman Bruno? Can I have, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting. I don't know, roll with it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.